I'll call the meeting to order of the City of Menifee. Roll call, vote please.
Yes, Councilmember August. Councilmember Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee Smyer.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver.
Here.
I'll note that Mayor Man is way on excused absence.
And words of inspiration from Pastor Jacob Williams, Eagle Ridge Church.
Thank you for having me here. If you all would go ahead and bow your heads with me as we pray. Abba Father, Lord, we do thank you for who you are. I thank you that you have seen fit to bestow upon this city the opportunity to grow and to thrive. Thank you for the council members and for their willingness to continue to oversee that growth. I pray, Lord, that you would allow a spirit of peace to be upon this meeting, that you would continue to be glorified, and thank you again for who you are and what you've done in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Councilman Lee Smyer, would you lead us in the flag slowly?
Sure. Please join me in saluting our nation's flag. To the right hand of your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
You all have copies of the minutes of the council meeting for March 18th, plus you have minutes of the special city council meeting workshop meeting on March, I said 18th and 16th.
Mr. Chair, if it meets your pleasure, I just wanted to note that the chief deputy is unavailable to be with us this evening, to be introduced, so that item is being removed from the agenda for her scheduling purposes.
Understood. Any other comments? If not, I'll just take a motion or-
Move approval of the minutes.
A second?
Second.
So proved.
And I will note an abstention for the workshop for Mr. Edgerton. He was not at that meeting, so I'll note that he abstained.
Any agenda modifications?
Other than the removal of the introduction, no, sir.
Any public comments?
Yes, sir. Greg Menzel. Greg, while you're walking up, let me ask you to make sure you talk right into the mic so that Deputy, or that Councilmember Edgerton can hear because he's calling on a telephonic line.
Whoops, spider hanging on the mic. Okay, well, oh, well. That's, that's the way we've done it in Menifee for 25 years. My name's Greg Menzel. I've lived in this town, well, it wasn't a town when I moved here, 35 years ago. Started the fire department, started the Menifee Business Association. I'm trying to bring to your attention that Lake Elsinore, and I hope she passed out letters of this, they're trying to change the zoning on the last 20 acres coming into the city of Menifee from eight family homes to 83 family homes. Holland Road is a huge problem. All these people, they're not shopping in Elsinore, they're shopping in Menifee, and they're coming up Holland Road. Total disaster. We fought this piece of property nine years ago when they first did the development because there was Indian matattis on it, the eucalyptus trees, which they've already cut down, had red-tailed hawk nest in it. There were three families of burling owls on the property. None of this is listed in their environmental impact study. Mr. Brady here, he explained to me that Menifee City went, talked with them a year ago against the high density that they were proposing. April 7th, there's a meeting at Elsinore, the public hearing on this, which me, and I'm trying to drum up, I just got this notice this weekend, and I'm, I would love to have somehow the city council or somebody also make the input known that this is, there's no buffer between horse property, I have four acres, my neighbor have five acres, 10 acres, 15. We have multiple horses, we raise our own pigs, our own cows. You put in trackies, literally a brick wall fence between us, there's going to be wars. The flies, the dust. We love it. That's what we're here for, you know? And the next meeting, I'll be back to talk about the Menifee Dust Bowl between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock and 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock between Marietta and Anna along Holland Road with the school. Traffic that goes through there at 90 miles an hour. You guys tried to help us out and put up a sign, a traffic sign, that for the first four days, nothing was on it. The next three days, it said, "Slow residential, 25 mile an hour will be enforced." For the last week, it says, "City, city event parking," with an arrow on it. For a week and a half, that's what that sign says on Corson Avenue. You posted truck, no limited, or five-ton truck signs on Corson Avenue. For 35 years, there never been any big trucks on that road except for people delivering to our properties. Holland's a different issue. Now that it's open, yes, big trucks might go up and down that, but Corson, you posted?
Mr. Menzel, that's your time.
Thanks a lot. You guys have fun.
The other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'll just say a word to Mr. Menzel, too, if it feels any better. They put a sign at the end of my street saying, "Right or turn left," an arrow, that you could only go right or left, and if you go straight through, you're going right through a chain-linked fence and into dirt, so I don't know why they wasted their money on that either, and that's a recent sign. Can't be cheap putting up the signs. So, tonight, I'm going to address a fact that we have a city manager that didn't even apply for the job. There's no resume for Mr. Rob Johnson. I don't know if any of you are aware of that. I don't know how somebody gets a job without a resume. I have a bio here. I have his bio, three little paragraphs. I guess he started out here as a, what, community director or something, going to little meetings and doing fluff or something, and has somehow just moved right up the ranks without any, doesn't even look like there's any real educational background to be a city manager. This city had to pay, how much, half a million dollars to hire somebody, quarter of a million dollars to hire somebody to come in to train you? Seems like you should have known your job before you got hired. Makes me wonder who you're taking directions from and orders from. Maybe it's a Marion Ashley thing and a county thing. Maybe that's why we have a former council member that was arrested. Maybe that's why we have an application for council members that does not have on it the question, "Are you a felon?" I've never filled out a job application that didn't ask that. Ask that when you get a driver's license, ask that when you get a passport, doesn't ask it to run a city. That's why we can't get fields tested. That's why we're almost bankrupt. No matter what they come and say about our financial status, we're not in that good a shape. That's why we have toxic waste records that are destroyed, and the city here doesn't want them. That's why thousands of homes and schools are being built on toxic fields. I think, Rob Johnson, you have no idea how to run a city, and I think the city's going to get in worse shape than ever under your direction. Today's paper, The Press Enterprise, had an article about a young man, plays sports, took very ill, almost died. He had what they considered a superbug. He plays sports. He plays on sports fields here in this city, sports fields in Temecula, sports fields in Marietta, sports fields everywhere. We have sports fields here that are not only contaminated, but now, thanks to Mr. Lee Smyer, we have the material put on playgrounds that's not safe, that is toxic material, and the research should have been done before that was allowed.
Any other speakers?
Yes, Your Honor, Tom Furman out. Can you hold a minute, please? Yes, Mr. Edgerton.
I don't want to misrepresent someone. Can you, just very quickly, nutshell for me succinctly, what was Katie's position regarding our city manager? I didn't, I didn't pick it entirely up.
You would like me to nutshell that?
Yes.
Okay. It was not favorable. Mr., Mr. Johnson said it was not favorable. She feels he is not qualified to run a city.
That Rob is not qualified.
That is correct.
Well, I do want to jump in and comment on that. We've spent a lot of time with council, and John and I were two of the original members of this council, and we've gone through, through several people. There is a lot of benefits in bringing somebody up from the ground up. You've got CEOs of major, major corporations today came up from the bottom, and Rob Johnson was praised by the people that he worked for and the people that he worked around, and I think he's done a fantastic job. I'm not disagreeing with your right to say what you want, but my view of Rob Johnson is that he is an excellent administrator. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Munir. The three-minute period was up, and Councilman Edgerton is allowed, I understand, just, just for the record, Councilman Edgerton and any council member is allowed a brief response to an issue raised, but that doesn't extend the time or invite a dialogue.
That's true.
Thank you, sir.
Any more speakers?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Tom Furman.
Good evening, Council, and good evening, Wally. How are you doing?
I'm doing great.
Good. I want to just reiterate and support Greg on his comments. The Upton Hills area, which is Anna Lane going, Anna Lane is the edge of Upton Hills, and it was a development that started back in 1956, and they were all one-acre horse properties. Now, going up Anna Lane, there's, there's 14 one-acre properties. Then, as you go west, there's twos, fives, a four, and a 20-acre piece of property. That would be Rudy Solis's place. Now, the prudent thing to do would be to buffer larger lots next to the larger lots that we have in the Upton Hills area. I'm a property owner on the border also because my property is on the corner of Anna Lane, and also, the, the area that they want to develop the 20 acres is probably the lowest point, and that water will drain north in, onto the Brookfield property. Now, there are 100, at least 100 constituents in District 2, and they need, they need some help, and they're asking that the council, and maybe you, Matt, could go speak on, on Tuesday at the Lake Elsinore meeting with the feelings of the constituents and how the council overall feels about the fact that Lake Elsinore is cramming large lots next to horse properties, okay? Thank you very much.
Any more speakers?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Diane Wayne, and just a bit of introduction about myself. I've lived in Menifee over 20 years, attended some of the best universities, and were registered dietitian for over 30 years. Worked at hospitals, nursing homes, schools, universities, and government. Worked on federal grants for years, applied for grants, reviewed grants for major institutions. And as you can see, I'm African-American, so I'm pretty well-versed in issues of fairness. I'm here once again to talk about the CDBG grant that my mother, Earlene Thompson, applied for over a year and a half ago. I brought her application in myself. We were the second person to apply for the grant. There's definitely health and safety issues that have to be addressed, and the work at her house needs to start right away due to health and safety reasons, and these reasons have already existed for a long time. Now, we've had meetings and conversations, and meetings are still in process, but no work has been done, and she's still waiting for work to be done on her home. And even though we were the second ones to apply for this grant, there've been, as I've been told by your staff, at least 15 other homes that have been worked on before. And so, at a year and a half, we're one of the last people to have our homework done. So, part of the grant says that first come, first served, but basically, I feel as though, and we all feel in our family, that we were first come, but we are being served last. And we've heard nothing but lies about why we weren't served earlier, because I've asked many times when I called and spoke with Margarita Cornell. So, they did come out to our house, and we decided to add the roof, so now we have to reapply for the grant to get the work done on the roof. And we're being told that the funding is low, and the $10,000 per home may no longer be available to our home because of that. And we're also told that because the homes are attached, that her, my mother and her neighbor must apply and qualify for the grant for the city to work on their roofs, because both roofs need to be repaired. So, it just feels to me, this kept coming to me in the last couple of weeks, and I never think of this statement or anything, but something is rotten in the state of Denmark. And to me, Denmark has been Menifee-
Diane. -for the last year and a half. Diane, that is your time.
Okay.
What's your, excuse me, ma'am. What's the address on that property?
She lives at 28-218 Encino Drive in Sun City in the Hermosa section of Sun City.
Get one more time, please, on 28-
28-218 Encino Drive.
Encino Drive. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any further, up?
I have some information. I'll give it.
Councilman?
Thank you.
Lee Smyer?
Yeah, I would just ask if, I believe the speaker did come before us before and was directed back to Ms. Gonzalez. I was just curious if we have ever had any conversation with her after that last public meeting?
Yes, we have. I can turn it over to Community Services Director Robert Lennox. That's the program that's in his department, and from what I understand, they've been working quite lengthy of the time to get this one done, and, and yes, Gina did speak with her after the last meeting, and there was at least one meeting after that, but, Robert, can you fill us in?
Sure. City Manager is correct. Staff did meet immediately with the applicant after that. The component of the roof is to be withheld for a separate application because it is a shared asset. HUD requires us to treat those as individual applications because they're essentially sharing one piece on the same property. However, the balance of the improvements on the property are moving forward. We're still waiting for the bids or the quotes back from subcontractors to complete the work, which should be coming in any day now.
So, her portion of the grant that she can do on her property is funded?
Is moving forward and is funded, it's been awarded, yes.
And I understand the roof is shared with an adjoining house?
Correct.
Okay, so because it's adjoining, it's a separate process with the adjoining roof?
Correct.
Mr. Lennox, is that property on the east or west side of I-250?
It's on the west side.
On the west side?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Additional speakers?
Yes, sir. Bill Stevens.
Good evening. Bill Stevens, Menifee, 29287 Meandering Circle. I was hoping someone would stand up and say, "April Fool's, all this bad news," but I just have a little bit of good news. I'm glad to be here. Menifee's a great place, and like I said, we've been here three years, and I'm just happy with all the hard work you do, and I just, I just appreciate that. By trade, I'm a senior water resource planner for Rancho California Water District, and I'm sure you heard earlier this morning, around 11:30, Governor Brown come out with his executive order stating that the state of California is in quite the severe drought. I just have a little bit I wanted to share with you. I'm sure you're aware of it, but as you go through all the wherazas, this is the one that kind of hit me. Under the provisions of section, and he gives the code here, "I find the conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property continue to exist in California due to the water shortage and drought." And out of the 30 directives, there's just a couple I want to share with you. One is the Department of Water Resources will partner with the local water districts to replace over 50 million square feet of turf, which is kind of a good thing, that it'll be replaced with more drought-tolerant plants. The emergency, or the Energy Commission will partner also with the Department of Water Resources to have a limited time for state applications and rebates for incentives to help replace inefficient household devices, so that's washers and the such that happens toilets. The one that I find really interesting is number six. It says, "The water board shall prohibit irrigation with potable water on ornamental turf on public street mediums." So, that will directly affect a lot of the landscapes the city has throughout the state of California. I know we're going to, as a water district, we're meeting kind of vigorously to work with a lot of the landscape contractors and find out how to really implement this. If not, we're going to have tuck of a Dust Bowl. It'll be happening, but I would just encourage you to, to take a look at that. I'm sure the attorney's on top of that, but it's, it's quite important here in the state of California, especially locally, to take a good look at where we are with the drought, and I thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. August?
Yes, one thing, I was going to talk to, with closing comments tonight, I was going to talk to the city manager about this, but I might as well do it now. I would ask the city manager and your staff if you could get ahold of Eastern Municipal Water District and see what the impacts of this executive order are going to be on the city of Menifee. If, you know, no hurry on that. I think we're meeting with him on August the 20th, but if we can get kind of a heads-up on that prior to that meeting would be helpful for us.
Is this in regards to water levels and development?
Whatever the impacts. Use your own discretion on that. I know it's, it's, it could possibly affect our golf courses, cemeteries, and it, will it affect our households? In other words, there's going to be a per capita, it's, it sounded to me like it was going to be a per capita restriction, and someone who lives in a house, a single person who lives in a house who, who's monthly water bill is maybe $48, and where, and compare that to a household with four people in it where the water bill is $150 a month, is it, is it going to affect both situations, or how's it, how's it going to be applied in the city of Menifee? That would, that would help us all understand. Thank you.
Any further speakers?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Councilmember reports on committee activities. Remember, the purpose of this particular portion of the agenda is really not to talk about your requests for future agenda items. This is the time to talk about meetings that the city is paying for, for you to go to and to make a report back. Mr. August?
Oh, two, two items to report on. On the 26th, as an alternate for Mr. Edgerton, I attended the RTA Board of Directors meeting. Nothing really that pertained to the city of Menifee. There were several authorizations and resolutions that more had to do with federal funding and grants that, from the government and the state into RTA. Today, I attended another meeting, and this was a, again, as an alternate for Mr. Edgerton. And Mr. Edgerton, if you're on the phone, they would much rather have you there than me, so get back as soon as you can. But anyway, we went over only two items today, and the only one that kind of might have applied to Menifee was a federal approval for a resolution authorizing federal money for cities in rural areas with populations under 50,000 people, and Hemet was on that, and I asked what the population of Hemet was, and somebody said, RTA didn't know, but somebody else in the audience said 83,000, so I asked them why Menifee wasn't on it, and they said they were going to correct that, so somewhere, where they're thinking about us down here, and we're, we're still kind of not considered a rural area in terms of this funding that's coming down from the federal government, but Canyon Lake, San Jacinto, so we're in the middle of it, so I no doubt think that it's going to affect us, and RTA is aware of that, and they're working on that. So, that's all I have to report.
Councilman Lee Smyer?
Yeah, I just wanted to report out that myself and Commissioners Zimmerman and Gudroyce met with our community development, what is your title officially? Community Services Director, and we did come up with the name for the Audie Murphy Park, PA 31. It was, it was decided unanimously that we would be calling it Spirit Park. It's a somewhat of a military acknowledgement of Audie Murphy's background. It acknowledges local veterans, and also pays a little bit of homage to some of the Native Americans that were in here that, that referenced the, the spiritual aspects of our valley. So, it really was a broad, encompassing name, and there were, there were some additional thoughts that we had in regards to some ornamentation, bronze statues, things like that, that we had proposed to the Audie Murphy Development in Brookfield, and we're, we're not sure if, if we're going to be able to get all that, but, but with the, with the reporting out of the name, I guess, I'm not sure if I'm going to be looking for a consensus of the council or a ratification of that decision from the ad hoc committee's findings of what would be the correct procedure at this point. So, basically, just reporting out that we came up with that name, bringing it back to our council, and if our council has a better decision or a better name, let's hear it. If not, would you make a motion, or do we, what do we need to do at this point?
I think we need to, we need to bring it back and agendize it, and so we can do that on a future council meeting now that we have that information.
Okay. Very well.
Okay. I think we've, unless there's some more reports? Consent calendar is the next item on the agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to pull anything off this consent calendar? Hearing now, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. I take a second.
I would second that.
Motion and a second.
And I would also add that I'm extremely excited that we've, that we're awarding those contracts for the new stoplights, so good job to our, our Public Works Director in that department. Very excited.
I second that motion. Well, I second that idea. Is there, if we have a motion, we have a second. Would you like to call?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Councilmember Edgerton on the consent agenda.
Aye.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Lee Smyer.
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Denver.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public hearing for ordinance number 2015-67, park design, landscape, and tree preservation. Does the city manager have a report?
We do have a staff report this evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. Mr. Lennox will have the balance of the item.
Thank you, city manager and council. This item is for the consideration and public hearing of ordinance number 2015-167, Park and Landscape Design Standards and Pre-Tree Preservation Ordinance. To give you an idea of what the ordinance is proposing, it would establish Chapter 9.86, Park Design, Landscaping, and Tree Preservation within the Menifee Municipal Code, creating standards and criteria applicable to park design and landscaping, irrigation and tree preservation within the city. The current standards that are used by both public work staff, engineering, building and safety, community services, and all of our landscaping staff is essentially borrowed from Riverside County's designs and guidelines for irrigation amenities furnishings. Currently, there is no tree preservation component of that, so we typically enlist our best practices and previous knowledge of projects that we've overseen. The current standards lack detail and also really call for a higher standard of quality construction materials for both aesthetics and for practical environmental application, so essentially, it's very limited what we're using currently, and some of it is borrowed from other agencies in and around the valley and region. Primarily, those are designed for rural application. As you all know, prior to the city's incorporation, this city or this area was even more rural than it is today, and those standards reflected that. To date, the review process has included the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission reviewing and recommending the city council approve the ordinance and the guidelines on February 26th, and then it was brought back to them again on March 26th with some minor revisions from the planning commission. And then it was brought back to them again on March twenty-sixth with some minor revisions from the Planning Commission. And the Planning Commission's review initially was on March eleventh, where they made some recommendations. Staff from both community development and from community services met with the commissioners outside of that meeting for one-on-one notes, and then brought it back to the commission on March twenty-fifth, wherein they adopted Planning Commission Resolution fifteen dash two hundred and two. Essentially, the ordinance, the the action includes the ordinance itself, park design guidelines, park details, landscape design guidelines, and landscape details, all of which were available for your review prior to this meeting. It is a very thick document, has a lot of specific technical information into it, which was reviewed by both commissions. So tonight, recommendation is to open and conduct the public hearing, find that the municipal code amendment is exempt for further environmental review, and authorize staff to notice the file of exemption, introduce the ordinance, adding the chapter to the municipal code, and schedule for a second reading and adoption on April fifteenth if it's the council's desire. Tonight, I am available to answer questions as well as the city's contract landscape architect, Gary Hoyt, who helped put together the standards and details for this. It was a previous contract that was approved by council. And in addition to that, the community development staff is here, who also assisted with the review process. That concludes my report.
Any public speakers?
No, sir. This ordinance or this notice was published in a timely manner, and I've had no communication from anyone, and there are no speakers signed up to speak. So when you open the hearing after you ask for questions, then we will not have speakers unless someone comes forward at that time.
Mr. Edgerton, did you want to speak?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. Do any of us in the city council have any questions of staff on this report?
No.
No? Very good. Then I will, do I open the meeting and then?
Yes.
We should have done this open speakers and all that, and then I'll close the meeting.
Well, open the meeting, ask if there are speakers, and I'll note the time of the meeting opening is seven thirty-two. I have no speakers signed up, and I don't believe there are any speakers.
Any speakers? If not, oh, there's one.
Mr. Wright, get right. There you go.
My name's Bill Wright. I'm a citizen here in Menifee, and I spoke to you a few weeks ago regarding the protocols for tree pruning and tree care. And you have the item of tree preservation here. And I'm wondering, I haven't seen the details on the proper protocols you're proposing. Is there a way that I can get that and review it?
In fact, Julie's bringing that to you right now.
Excellent.
And if you would prefer it's on a disk, we also have that.
Okay, I'd like that, please.
The disk or the paper?
Which is more convenient for you?
Well, there's the paper and there's the disk.
Okay, the paper would be fine.
Well, we don't have it on vinyl, however.
This this I'd probably get into this more quickly, and if you need it returned, I can return it to you.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, any other speakers?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we close the public meeting and bring it back behind the dais. Is there any comments, questions, concerns amongst ourselves? Supervisor or Councilman August?
All right. Yeah, I would like to make, I would like to make a couple of comments on this, Mr. Chair. Anyway, I did attend the March eleventh meeting with the Planning Commission. I sat back in the back row for three hours. I certainly want to thank them for taking the time. They have more patience than I do. And they were queried by some people in the development community. I understand there was another meeting. I also know that Parks and Trails took up some, gave some serious time to this issue. So I know for the city, it's been very, very well vetted, and I also know it's probably very well needed for the city. So if nobody, what I'm going to do basically is gonna move to introduce ordinance number two thousand fifteen one sixty-seven and have a second reading scheduled for adoption on April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen.
And I do appreciate the motion. May we take the motion first for finding the amendment exempt from further environmental review and authorize staff to file a notice of exemption for the ordinance? And a second?
And a second?
All the same.
Okay, Mr. Edgerton, thank you. Let's take a roll call vote on that first, then we'll move to the other item, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August? Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Denver?
Aye.
Thank you. And then the, did you want to make the motion on the ordinance, sir?
Yes.
All righty, and a second on that is?
Second.
I have the title of the ordinance that I do have to read for you. I'm sorry. I know that it seems long, but I do. This is introduction of ordinance two thousand fifteen one sixty-seven, adding chapter nine point eight six to the municipal code to require to regulate park design, installation, and maintenance of landscaping and irrigation and tree preservation on residential and non-residential properties, public and private, with the city of Menifee, and schedule for a second reading and adoption on April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Go ahead and call for the rule.
Councilmember Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Denver?
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion items. Introduction of ordinance number two zero one five dash one six nine, Amendment to Parks. Do we have a report or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council, we do have a report. Robert Lennox will have the balance of the item.
Thank you, city manager and council members. I'll keep it brief. And in short, essentially, this item is introduced and approved the first reading of ordinance number two thousand fifteen dash one sixty-nine, amending chapter two point three zero, section zero eight zero of the Menifee Municipal Code, which established, which will establish the date, time, and location of regular meetings for the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. I would note that, again, this is an amendment essentially changing the meeting dates due to existing schedules of commissioners. There was a request from commissioners to adjust those dates from what is currently the first, I'm sorry, the second and fourth Thursdays of the month to the first and third Thursdays of the month. Still to be held on Thursday, still to be held at six P.M. here at City Hall. That is essentially all that this ordinance does. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Very good. Councilman Leesmeyer?
Yeah, I would just go ahead and make a motion to introduce and approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand fifteen one sixty-nine, amending that chapter two point three, section zero eight zero of the Menifee Municipal Code.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. Madam?
Serge, I'm sorry, I do have to read the title. So an ordinance of the city council of the city of Menifee, California, amending section oh eight oh time and date and location of regular meetings of chapter two point three oh Parks and Recreation and Trails Commission of Title II Administration and Personnel of the Menifee Municipal Code to amend the provisions establishing the time, date, and location of regular meetings of the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Commission. And on that, do you wish me to call the votes, sir?
Can we just take a vote, a general vote?
That's a roll call vote, sir.
Roll call vote?
Yes, sir. And this would be also including scheduling for second reading and adoption on April fifteenth?
Absolutely, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Leesmeyer?
Aye.
Council, Councilmember Edgerton?
Aye.
And Mayor Protem Denver?
Aye.
You see what you put us through, Bill?
Very good. City attorney reports?
No reports this evening, Mayor Protem.
Hallelujah. City manager reports?
Just two items, sir. I have been asked by the mayor to to bring a discussion item for a future agenda topic. Would you like me to do that now, or would you like me to do that?
Now, go ahead.
Recently, the Planning Commission approved a generational concept for the Lennar properties and building that is going on in the second phase of the, I can't remember what the exact property is called, but it's the property that is adjacent to the Menifee Road Missing Link. It went through the Planning Commission. It was approved. However, the mayor would like a discussion at council about the exterior door being added to the unit to make it functional as the way Lennar has the product in other communities. All I'm asking for for him is a second to bring that back, and he would like that discussion on the fifteenth.
I would welcome that discussion, sure.
We have you, you have your second.
Great. The other thing is, I need to let you know of a staff update. I did send you an email today earlier, but I wanted to make sure that that you had this out in public. Rafael Martinez, our Assistant Public Works Director and Traffic Engineer, is leaving us. His last day will be tomorrow. I've met with Jonathan and Smith, Public Works Director and City Engineer. We're looking at revamping the Engineering Public Works Department. We've made a couple of moves, and effective tomorrow, we'll have an acting principal engineer over land development, which is Yolanda Macalalad. And she's been handling all the land development with the assistance and supervision of Rafael, who's no longer there, so she's actually gonna be taking over as the supervisor of that division. And the other pieces of the puzzle that Rafael's leaving behind are gonna be picked up by Steve Glenn, who will be the acting Public Works Manager. We have saved enough money with this move. If we don't, the idea is to not continue to fund the Assistant Public Works Director position and use the salary to make these other moves. We'll save about ten thousand dollars and have three people basically working in the department instead of one Assistant Public Works Director. And finally, the last piece of the puzzle is to bring on another engineer for land development. We have seen a huge uptick in our land development arena. We know we have eighty-seven projects on the on the books and coming forward right now, so we need some more help in that arena. So I wanted to make that announcement tonight and make sure that you're aware of what was happening in a reorganization of Public Works and Engineering.
Councilman August?
I would like to say a few words about Mr. Martinez. I've had many, many meetings with people from Sun City, and of course, the person there with all the knowledge and the person that could give the, you know, the go or the not-go on something was Mr. Martinez. And I have, I've never enjoyed working with anyone more in the city than Mr. Martinez. He puts such a good face of enthusiasm that gave the city, you know, in my opinion, a good reputation. And I want to congratulate Rob. I don't think we'll be able to replace Mr. Martinez, in my opinion, but I know you'll really try. And are you having a luncheon for him tomorrow?
I believe there is a get-together with staff to wish him well, so if you would like to come by and?
I would love to.
And say goodbye.
I do. And then he would just thank you for bringing him to the city and allowing me to work with him for a while.
You're welcome. It was a great opportunity to to get somebody who was on the quick meteoric rise to wherever he's going to go, and we had him for eighteen months, and he's going back to Corona in a in a higher position for more money, and he's closer to home. So it's hard to keep him when when they get offers like that.
Councilman Leesmeyer?
Well, I'm glad to hear that we were his stepping stone, and I do wish him well the same. But I did want to remind Jonathan and Rob that we do have that meeting in Quail Valley regarding the Quail Valley update that the community group is putting together on April twenty-second. And we were looking for a Spanish speaker. Rafael filled that role last year. I just want to make sure we got that under control.
We do. We have someone on staff that we'll bring, and he's an engineer to boot.
Fabulous.
Correct.
Um, Clark?
Yes, sir.
This is our time to talk about future agenda requests.
It is.
Yes. The health issue that I'm dealing with is still up in the air, looking positive, but not with certainty. And at some point in the future, maybe the council wants to discuss elections versus appointments as a general matter, since that came up. And I just throw that out there, number one. Number two, the gentleman fitting to the mic in discussing Governor Brown's issue today on the water was quite disturbing. What it does, of course, it picks out many options. The marketplace could address this issue locally as opposed to having it done centrally. Most of us, I think all of us on the council, prefer local control, but surely that that might be an issue that needs to be brought up on a gen later and discussed. Because right now, I don't know, maybe somebody knows what all the implications are of Brown's actions on our activities here. And lastly, I just once again want to say to our staff and to my colleagues, for your patience, your kindness, your generosity in a tough time for me, thank you very much. You have a nice evening.
Wally, we all want to wish you the best, and we wish you were back here. It'd sure save a whole bunch of trouble about elections versus appointments and all that if you'd just get your butt back here.
That would be my preference.
And I'd like to turn it out and over to Councilman Leesmeyer.
Hey, Wally, I just, I, my heart goes out to you. I'm very sympathetic to your position. I I wish you all the best.
Thank you, man.
But, and I wish I wish I could have worked with you here at the dais. Having never sat with you at the dais, it's a little surreal to hear you say this, but is it, are you are you proposing to resign from council, or what exactly are you saying here?
Well, you know, at, not now, because the options are getting better are still there. But at some point, one needs to, you know, address the issue. You can't let it go on forever. So right now, my treatments happen to be on Wednesdays. Otherwise, I would be at the council meeting. So I need to see how I'll function at a council meeting, and I need to know how these treatments go. And right now, there's a few unanswered questions. When they're answered, I'll either be on the council or I will sit down with the council and explain where I'm going and surely then up to the council and then up to my colleagues. But I won't leave you hanging forever.
Okay, all right. I just, thank you, Wally. Appreciate it. Again, I am very sympathetic to your to your situation, so I do wish you the very best.
Councilman August, did you wish to speak?
I did. And Mr. Edgerton, can you hear me? No.
Just speak anyway.
That's okay. Anyway, chiming in, we did speak about the water issue and the significance and the impacts on the city of Menifee earlier this evening. And what I'm thinking after your remarks is that perhaps we would want to agendize perhaps a meeting with Mr. Sullivan and Eastern Municipal Water District prior to August the twentieth, just to discuss the impacts and implications of this recent decision out of Sacramento. So, Mr. Edgerton, anybody on the council, can I get a second on that?
Sure, you have a second.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that's a future request.
Prior to August the twentieth, probably.
Is there anything more that needs to be brought before this august group? City manager reports?
Nothing further.
Meeting's adjourned. I want everybody to look up there. This is about the shortest meeting we've had in three years.